Yes, Madam President, the request of the Board was to have our presentation on the Footsteps to Brilliance program. And so what we've asked is Dr. Greg Spencer with Footsteps to Brilliance to go ahead and do a presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to him. It'll be a free flowing one where you can ask some questions. Craig will go ahead and run the slideshow. So in a second, he's going to turn on his screen and it'll follow his PowerPoint. But it'll be up on the screen so you can see it. Anybody that's online will see the same PowerPoint. And then we'll just kind of go for it. We're planning on basically 30 minutes. Then we'll get out of this meeting and go into the regular meeting that starts at 6:00. So Dr. Spencer, go ahead and put your screen up and we will work on it. Make sure it's all working.
Okay. You see it?
Not yet. You got it, Craig? Did you share your screen?
Let me go ahead and check it.
On the bottom right, Present Now. If you share your screen, then you have to hit, you have to hit Share and it should take over for you.
Okay, I've done that.
Did you, hi Greg Spencer, this is Kim Tofidi. Hi, Mr. Wyman.
How you doing?
Hi, it's great to be here today. We also invited Virginia, Dr. Virginia Elizondo. She joined us as well.
Hello.
So we're just trying to get your presentation up and running. You are coming in from, into our Google Meet. So right now you're on, but we're not, we're not seeing your presentation.
You're not, okay.
So Greg, when you go to the bottom of the Google Meet window and you're in the bottom right hand corner and you click on Present Now, do you have an option to?
I have an option.
A screen or a window?
I have an option to share and that's what I've done. Let me double check it here. For some reason, okay, I see Present Now.
Mm hmm.
Go back here. Is that now? A window? And share. Huh, it's not coming up for some reason.
Share your screen. Try sharing your screen that has the presentation on it and see if that helps.
Okay, I'm at that screen now.
Okay, Mr. Paul.
Pardon me? The other option is, Kim, I sent, I sent it to you as well, maybe.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Maybe it's not working on my end for some reason. I don't know why. My share button is faded out for some reason.
Oh, perhaps the person moderating the meeting needs to give you the ability to share.
Okay. Dr. Wyman, is that available?
Let me check, he's coming in.
Thank you.
So is it, do I need to hit the?
No, I do, I do have the slides here if you need me to go through it, you know.
If, probably that's the quickest way at this point. And then I can just say next and you can go to the next slide.
Okay, let me get that downloaded real quick and then I will share. And now we have a lot of sympathy for our teachers that had to do distance learning in the springtime. Because sometimes we have technical difficulties. So thank you for your patience. Okay, so let's see. I'm going to share, I'm going to try to share now.
Okay.
And, and I just need to get it over to the right place.
Here we go. Okay, we have it now.
Okay, and I'm actually sharing some of my own slides, Greg. Let me get the ones that you just pulled up. I just need to drag them over into the right space now that I have it open.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, does this look familiar, Greg?
I, for some reason, I am not seeing your slides. But let's do it this way. I have my copy, so I will follow along and we'll go to plan B.
Okay.
So, well, let's go ahead and start. So Dr. Wyman and Board members and, and the leadership of Combs Genified School District, thank you so very much for allowing us to briefly just share an update regarding our partnership. And on behalf of our founders, we want to thank you again for your confidence and partnering with us. So Footsteps to Brilliance, just as a reminder, Combs Genified has qualified for a perpetual lifetime license with us. And so we're very, very proud that you're just frankly, one of a handful of districts in the nation that has this license. And during the time that we're in now, this is critically, critically important. Kim, Slide two, please. The thing that we want to share with you is that basically you have now partnered with us with our entire ecosystem of Footsteps to Brilliance Enterprise Solution, our Clever Kids University and Clever Kids University for Kindergarteners, as well as our Summer CLIM program. I knew what I call our ERA Reporting Dashboard, Equity Reporting Accountability Data Dashboard. And then of course, our virtual and blended profession development and engagement with your teachers and community as we roll that out at some point as well. Next slide.
Okay.
Key things of Footsteps to Brilliance is the convenience of it. Because of, since 2010, when we started our organization, we've been providing our program where children and families can access it either online or offline. So once they download the three apps that we have, that you now have access to, kids do not need access to the internet until they're near, when they're near Wi-Fi, all their data will pull up and that teacher, that parent administrator can access the data, pull up reports and so forth. And Kim Tofidi, our Vice President of Client Success, will walk through that in just a moment. In addition to that, we can be used on any device. Any device that can access the internet and access smart apps can access our platform. And of course, our platform is fully 100% English and Spanish, 24/7 access. The key piece that we're really proud of to be able to partner with you on is the increased stressors that all educators and parents and others are dealing with right now. It's something that we're going to help mitigate. As a former principal and superintendent myself, one of the things that I know as I talk to superintendents around the country daily now, is that everyone's stressed out. And we are your insurance policy to make sure that no matter what happens, whether kids in school or blended, or they have to stop-start, it doesn't matter because of the foundation of the curriculum that we provided. Next slide. Piece, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. The other key piece is that Alan Viallo Bos, as you know, the CEO of United Way of Pinell County, is looking forward to being a very integral part of the community outreach once we start that piece. The nice thing about the United Way, as you know, they are looking forward to really helping to get this word out. And Dr. Wyman, Alan is looking forward to working with you and your team in that endeavor. Next slide. The other thing is that who benefits? Once we open this to your entire community, as you know, because of the equity, the multimillion dollar equity in-kind grant that the district has received, this will allow 100% free access in a perpetual lifetime manner for every single resident, child, student of your entire community for life. If they move from your area to Kansas City tomorrow, they will still get free access because that cost has been borne by Footsteps to Brilliance because of the leadership of your district and the vision and expectations you have for excellence. So we're really proud to be able to partner with you in that endeavor as well. Next slide. Once we start leveraging the community outreach piece, we will be able to work with you and United Way and others to really engage community leaders, business leaders, faith-based community leaders and others to be a part of this initiative so their constituency will have access to it. The nice thing is this, they're going to go through your portal. So from a branding standpoint, it's going to really highlight your district and your community unlike any other around you because you're going to be able to offer something that's truly unique to the community. Next.
Okay.
And then of course, what we do is we create with you a literacy collaborative that's going to allow the awareness to be consistent across the board, to be able to allow all of your different agencies and organizations, both within your district and outside of your district, as well as corporate partners, because we already in many communities work with United Way. We work with McDonald's, we work with Head Start, we work with the local libraries and other corporations and foundations to make sure that the consistency of access is across the board. Next. And recap as I wind down and before Kim shares, once again, we're available on any device. Your students, parents and educators can use it with or without internet access. We have built-in lesson plans and activities, all built-in that we're adding to on a regular basis. So all of our thousands of books, games and activities are already tied to lesson plans. Where our, Kim's team is tying it to your Scoping and your ELA curriculum already. And because of this integration approach, you're going to see a hand in glove bit. Next. Another key thing is that we're more than just literacy. We are providing you STEM, math, science, social studies, you name it. It's included in a modular fashion within Footsteps to Brilliance. And we're culturally relevant with everything we do as well. And we're adding on new modules all the time. My newest modules are authentic Spanish songbooks and our physical science module. And we just keep making sure everything we do is added, meeting the state standards with Arizona, meeting the spoken to print in expectations of your district and making sure, once again, it's fun, engaging and challenging for your students. Next. So there are three levels to Footsteps to Brilliance. The red level is going to be for your, your early learners, birth to pre-K kindergarten students, so to speak, are going to be exposed to different elements. Next slide.
Yes. Sorry, these are jumping around, Greg. I really apologize.
Go ahead.
There we go.
Oh, I'm sorry, is everything okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you're at the yellow level now?
Yes, I'm at the yellow level now.
Okay, sorry. I'm talking at a New York minute, sorry. I also wanted to make sure that you're aware that at the yellow level for your first grade students, they're going to be exposed to different elements of literacy skills as well. Built on a foundation of literacy, both English and Spanish, but once again, exposing them to different elements of their learning, of their learning modality. Next slide.
Got it.
The blue level, second and third grade students are going to have access to this. Now, keep in mind, even though our curriculum is, has been written from birth to third grade, we have fourth, fifth and sixth graders using our program for remediation intervention. So that's available to any student that would need that, but, but the curriculum is built on a birth to third grade foundation. Next. And then of course, one of the key things that we're finding with districts and counties across America is the need and the expectation for asynchronous education. So Footsteps to Brilliance can both go asynchronous, synchronous, blended, virtual, you name the way you want to engage with your children and your students. Footsteps to Brilliance is going to be able to impact all these different elements because our platform, quite frankly, was built for times such, such as this. And because of that, we're going to be able to engage with your at-risk as well as your students that are gate and accelerated learners as well. Next. Couple of last slides and that is, one of the things that we're really proud of. In fact, we have two states that are in final discussion with us right now about implementing our platform as a statewide initiative because of our new reporting tool, our equity reporting and accountability tool. Because we're going to be able to really take looking at data to a whole nother level. Dr. Wyman, this is tenfold of what the data reporting tool was when we first met with your district months ago. This is going to be looking at equity and who specifically is at risk. And then be able to look at which students are making progress, but you're going to be able to group your students and you're going to be able to look at them and disaggregate the data and slice and dice it in many, many different simple ways. And this, and then this next slide here is being able to look at Quick Action for Leaders. So you'll be able to look at this in real time, a dashboard of classrooms, students, sites that you want to celebrate, you'll be able to monitor progress or where there may be areas of need. And then you'll be able to assess students in a much more specific way as well. So we will really be able to help you drill down in a very minute level, pull data up and look at it so that you can really have not only intervention, but also have ways that students can really look at and explore their success across the board. And lastly, the last slide is, I'll turn it over to Kim right now, who will walk you through what the modules look like and will both be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, so thank you so much, Greg. Before we, we jump into the information that I was going to share, what questions do we have? Or, you know, feedback now that you've kind of seen what you've invested in and where we are? We're going to, we're going to talk a little bit more about where we are with the implementation. But what questions do you have for us at this time?
If there's someone asking questions, I'm sorry, we cannot hear you.
They'd have to take down your mask or pop, pop open your, turn on their microphone.
You're welcome to put your questions in chat. It sounds like somebody may be trying to speak but won't be having issue with the audio. So you're also welcome to put your questions or thoughts in chat.
Question, I'll, I'll reiterate it.
Okay. My question is that if this can be used for those students in the Combs district and outside the district, what is the actual process for getting someone outside of the district logged on? I'm thinking about my grandparents.
So the question is if this can be used both inside and outside of the district, what's the process to get someone into the program who's outside of the district? We talked about like a community where we have grandparents who may be able to log in there or get their kids involved in this. And so that's, that's the question.
Great, I'll go ahead and address that right now if that's okay. And I'm going to put up a flyer that's been created for you to share with really anybody. And this is how people are going to register for the Footsteps to Brilliance apps. And they'll come, this is a flyer that I, hopefully, Mr. Wyman, you can, I sent these to you today again. So maybe you could just forward these files to your board and so that they have them as well. And you can share these with anybody you want to. But the idea is that you can come to this registration portal right here and you can register student, or excuse me, you can register children that are not currently attending a Combs school this way. Just for those of you who have grandchildren that live outside of the school district boundaries, it is going to ask you to present a, an address that is within the Combs school boundary. So just use, you know, your home that's in those boundaries or a school building address, something like that. So, so anyone, anyone with, and you need to be a parent or a grandparent because you'll register for your free parent or grandparent account. And then you will register all of the children that you want to have accounts. And you'll just need to present an address that's inside the J.O. Combs boundaries. And you can use any address within the boundaries and it will work.
And just as a reminder to the Board, our initial plan is to roll this out at the third, three-year-old through, I'll just say before pre-K level. And so we are working with Head Start and working with United Way to roll it out. We roll it out kindergarten, first grade, et cetera. But with everything going on, we are purposely looking at the community first and then moving into, into the older grades. We want to get the school here up and running before we start to add one more thing to everybody's plate. Although it's very easy to use and, and once everybody's registered, we're still going to go that, that three-year-old, four-year-old level first. And then we'll move on out to the, to the pre-K, K, first grade level and then onward as we move forward. So just, just be aware. Go ahead, Kim.
So we, we created these promotional materials for you so that you can share them however you want to. So if you happen to have a place of business or a community location, you're welcome to put these up. You're welcome to email them through your, say newsletters that you're a part of or other organizations that you might associate with, you can send them this way. Again, any family that's within the J.O. Combs school boundaries, district boundaries, will be able to register. And the trick there is just make sure that they're using an address within that. If you run into any trouble, you can let us know and we will help you get registered because we really want everyone and anyone utilizing the program. And like Dr. Wyman just mentioned, you know, especially our very early learners because we know that the more that they're exposed to literacy before they come into school, the better they're going to perform in school. So this is a wonderful opportunity to put a library essentially in the hands, in the pockets of our community around Combs. And they can be reading, playing games with their kids before they even hit school and helping to develop those critical skills. I can, I can tell you, it works and we have it on all of our devices. So we, we want the word to be spread and shouted from the rooftops. So, you know, Dr. Wyman, I'm just assuming that, that the files that we sent, you'll be able to forward those on. And if anybody needs help with, you know, any questions or any registration, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and forward those. And again, as much as anything else, because it's used on any device, it could be a phone, it could be a computer, it could be a tablet. It's really a reading program for kids and so a chance for you to read with your kids at home, especially when they're very young and it just gets them started off on the right foot. And so it's an engaging curriculum that, that they can use. At the third, three-year-old, excuse me, and four-year-old area, it's, it's quote unquote, for fun. I mean, obviously there's no grade or anything associated like that because they're not in our school system yet. But it's just a way to give kids a good start. It is in Spanish, so if we have individuals in our community that Spanish is a primary language, it's also, everything's in Spanish. So it's, it's really just a library of books that you can start to get your, your kids to read. And then there's some supplemental activities associated with it that allow for the kids to work, to gain comprehension and understanding. And so again, I think very strong program.
Yes, okay.
Got a follow-up question, so hang on, I'll have a Board member ask it.
I love it.
The question was, once you sign up for it, it says, go ahead and download the apps from the App Store. And so the Boardman was just wondering, where are the apps and what do we need to do to get them downloaded?
Okay, great. I was actually going to talk about that. So what you're going to do is you're going to go to this website and get registered. And then you're going to get an email that has your username and password and the super secret codes for the kids that you've registered under your parent or grandparent ID. You will then go to, in that email, it's going to give you the instructions of what to do, okay? But the next step is to download the app from your App Store. It is available on any App Store. So you can go to Apple, Amazon, Google for Android devices, and even the Microsoft Store. If you want to download it to your Windows 10 laptop or something like that, you can download it from those stores and you can get going. You can also access it online at myftb.com. And you just log in with the username and password and kids log in with their super secret code that they receive. So once the app is down, log in and then you can begin playing. I'm going to jump over to a few more slides, a couple of slides here because I think it will give you an idea of what to, which app to use with your kids or grandkids. Basically, let me just get to that here real quick. Okay, so we've already talked about the universe that we, that we belong to now and all the wonderful things that we have. The Clever Kids University pre-K app. I apologize for my dog that does not put away. I'm so sorry and that's embarrassing. I always put her away and I completely forgot to do that. Okay, so the Clever Kids University pre-K app is going to be for our children that are, you know, about two and a half, three years old up to kindergarten. And this is going to prepare them with everything that they need to be ready for kinder. It's going to focus on language and literacy, math, science, social and emotional development, approaches to learning and physical and perceptual development. They're going to work through daily activities. They spend about 15 to 20 minutes each day working through the daily activities. And it gives them again, that foundation that they need to be kinder-ready. Alphabet, alphabet sounds, everything that they need for that, that phonics and phonological foundation that's so important for kids to do well in kinder. After they complete the pre-K app, they'll be ready for the I Can Read app. This is the orange app. So if you have kids or grandkids that are, they know their alphabet, they know the sounds that the letters make and they're ready to start blending and sounding out words, then I Can Read is going to be the app for them. This is also great for kinder. This aligns really nicely to the kinder standards. It is a systematic approach to phonics where they're going to focus on letter sounds, word families, sight words. And they're going by the, actually by the fourth day of the first week, they read their first book on I Can Read. So this is going to get our kids reading and writing. They're going to have a wonderful opportunity to build skills in print concepts, phonemic awareness and grammar, as well as comprehension of vocabulary using our Fun STEM series books, Alphabet Animals. So this is the follow-on to the first app. So again, if you have your babies and they're ready to start reading, you know, and learning their alphabet, the first pre-K app, the red app is going to be for them. The I Can Read app is, is going to be the follow-on to that. Now, our Footsteps to Brilliance app, which is our flagship app, is the first app that we developed. As Greg mentioned, has three levels and it covers pre-K through third grade. So there's still lots of wonderful things in here for our pre-K and kinder students, for them to be reading books and interacting with literature and vocabulary and giving that rich exposure that they need. Our kids that are first through third, they'll want to download the Footsteps to Brilliance app. So again, if you're, if your children or grandchildren are first through third grade, the Footsteps to Brilliance app is going to be the one for them. Again, it's downloadable from any app. You just search for Footsteps to Brilliance and you'll get it. And if you go to that registration link, which is on the flyers that we created, it's going to send you an email that has all of this information so you don't even have to remember it after this meeting today. Okay. We do have for teachers a really wonderful way to provide learning pathways for students that connect directly to their curriculum. So our teachers in the pre-K through third grades where they're having to do some virtual and blended and synchronous and asynchronous learning with them, this is a really wonderful tool. It gives the kids a learning pathway to work on the app about 15 to 20 minutes a day in a manner that supports the classroom's learning objectives. So we go ahead and align these to the curriculum that the teachers are using so that weekly, they're giving these assignments to the kids and the kids are working through it independently. Maybe they're building it into their routine at home or maybe they're given center time at school to work on it. And it really supports what they're to be learning in the classroom that week. Okay. And then last but not least, our support for families. We have a big focus, of course, on the family. So as we get started, especially in the, the community with the three to five-year-olds and those that are getting ready for kindergarten, we have a wide range of resources for families. And I think the thing that I would like to share the most is that if you are part of an organization where you have contact with families and you would like some training for them on how to get registered, we can offer bilingual training for families. We have trainers that, such as Dr. Elizondo that's on the call with us today, that can do that in Spanish for our families that need it and can help them get started. We have been doing this all over the country. All summer, we have been meeting with families over Zoom and we're literally spending the time with them to help them download the app, get registered and get started with it so that they can go work on it with their kids after the Zoom call. So we're, we're prepared to do that. And we have a wonderful parent university that's in English and Spanish that provides training videos, technical support, anything that a family might need, as well as a bilingual help desk. So if there's a question that they have that they can't get answered at Parent University, they can email us for help as well. So this will really help the district as you're trying to get the word out and you're trying to help support families because we've built some of this infrastructure and it's in place already. So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any other questions. And if you would like me to, I'm happy to open up the apps and do a demo at this time if you need that. Maybe you've seen it or maybe you haven't. I'm happy to do it another time as well. But I just want to make sure that we're answering the questions that you have at this time.
All right, we're not going to be able to go ahead and open up the app because we're running out, we're running out of time. I don't know if there's a last question from any of the Board members that we can answer. We'll continue to roll this out. Again, we had a lot of our initial conversations pre-COVID-19, meaning December, January, February. And so that kind of threw us off a little bit as we were getting ready to get started. But we are working with the community first and we'll bring it into our schools and the lower grades fairly shortly. But we want to get everything up and running for this year before we add one more thing to the plate. Again, the whole idea of this was a way to get it into our community. You don't have to attend our school district to be, to be part of this. We just think it's good for the community to get strong reading skills before we before we start, before they start pre-K and Kinder, and then we'll continue to, to move on up with the other grades. So, we did want to do just a short little presentation for you. I appreciate the three of you being on the call. We are gonna have to go ahead and stop, step off of this meeting and go on to another meeting. I know there's lots of people on the line. You'll have to go back, you'll have to exit this particular meeting, and then if you go into the board docs again, you'll see a second meeting that's called the Regular Meeting. This was a special meeting, the Regular Meeting, which is the start of the, the regular board meeting. So, that transition will probably take a couple of minutes. We'll give everybody a chance to pop off of this one and jump on the other one before, before we get ourselves started. But again, to, to Kim and Greg and Virginia, thank you very much. We appreciate you sharing this information, and we'll definitely be in touch.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Craig, if you, if you could stop the recording there, and then we'll flip over to the other meeting.
Bye-bye.